They're trying to buy a property or a house and can't get it.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertising at the Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the board showing the time and place of the meeting. Everyone, please rise and see for the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item one, bond anticipation note sale.
In May is our usual recasting of our bond anticipation notes and as required by law, I am to notify the governing body that we recasted eight million fifty-one thousand dollars in bond anticipation notes at a two percent interest rate. I just need, basically, okay.
Okay.
Move it. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Just a note on the bonds, just aware that we, all our capital improvements and equipment are bonded, meaning we're borrowing money to pay for them. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. When we do get all the capital requests, they are just borrowed money. Item two, special use permit to Popcorn Park Zoo Rock to Adopt event.
The Popcorn Park Zoo is looking to hold their annual Rock to Adopt event and they're planning for this in September on both Saturday and Sunday, the twelfth and thirteenth. Obviously, as long as they restrictions, it will allow them to do so. So they're just looking for permission to have this. They usually have some bands, some performers there, vendors, sponsors, things for the kids to do. It's a fundraiser for the Popcorn Park Zoo. This has been reviewed by zoning and is temporarily approved pending your outcome.
Move it. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, does any committee members have any add-ons?
Let me get my add-on. Um, I've got a number, I have a number properly. Anyway, again, a number of complaints over the property maintenance, maintenance, somebody pulled outside of zoning. We want to address some of this stuff at a later date. And I'll just bring it up.
Basically, what it is, is that there's some items that are not addressed in the Boka code that we follow for property maintenance. And I'm not sure how nitpicky we want to get when it comes to property maintenance. So we did have a complaint about a residence. It was gone out and it was investigated. And basically, they had a lot of tree limbs, brush branches, whatever, down on their yard, plus their grass was exceeding the eighteen inch limit. A notice of violation was sent out. For those items that are enforceable, the resident complied. However, the complainer basically felt that we didn't do our job because there was moss growing on the roof, which is not part of the property maintenance code about moss growing on the roof. So how nitpicky do we really want to get? While it's not a pleasing...
In defense, wait, in defense, there wasn't a little bit of moss.
Yeah, it's not pleasing. No, it's patches of moss.
It was a carpet of moss. The roof was, it was a moss roof at this point.
Okay, this is, but this is a...
You can take that.
This is a rental, right?
The homeowner, the homeowner, state owner of the property does not think that's correct.
If the renter is not complaining to the owner.
Yeah.
What, where do we go? I mean, are we going to step in and interfere? I mean...
Something we can, as I said, we just food for thought for now.
Right.
Well, the other thing I do...
If you think about it for...
Well, the other thing I do suggest is there might be some things lacking in the property maintenance code that maybe we need to have somebody from the committee sit down and talk to Mr. Downing to say, what are some things that we need to think about changing in the code? Are there items that are lacking or things that we need to put in the code or even remove from it? I mean, those are some ideas since he's dealing with it all the time.
So with that in mind, I mean, let's discuss it, but maybe we develop a committee to sit down with Mr. Downing and go over some things. But as far as, and not to scream at him, but I will, just because, you know, the tenant doesn't complain. Listen, if I live next door to something and it's unsightly, to a certain degree, and people have to understand, I mean, we can't nitpick too much. And the issue that arises is that residents say, well, you did this to him, but you didn't do it to him. And it was eighteen inches there, but it was only fourteen inches there. And he did this. And so it's very hard to police this. And we talked about this in the past, but for sure, there are loopholes that we can close. So in the future, we should discuss this. Right now, we have a lot on our plate. But I'm glad to board it up. It's food for thought to bring up in the future and, yeah.
What I can do is ask Mr. Downing to provide, I'm sure he might have a list of things that need adjustments, if he could provide.
Yes, that would be great. That would be great.
First for you guys to review, and then we can go from there to have a meeting.
That would be perfect.
Sounds like a, sounds like a plan. Next, Mayor.
Okay, Veronica, we have two add-ons.
Two add-ons. Back in the early part of the spring, when COVID was around, we had discussed, and we've been discussing for a while now, marijuana, recreational medical marijuana dispensaries, and so on and so said things. And Mr. Connors's office was asked to develop some ordinances related to marijuana. We've decided until we went back to an actual public session, so that we can discuss them here in a forum. So I have them tonight for discussion and asking what you guys would like to do. Obviously, if we were looking at the time to establish some zones for medical dispensaries for marijuana in the M1 zone, which is the Lacy Township Business Park, and we were looking to possibly ban marijuana dispensaries and cultivation for recreational uses in town. So I'm not sure if Mr. Connors wants to give further details or...
Well, essentially, there is, Veronica has stated, there are two separate ordinances for consideration by the governing body. One would make medicinal marijuana dispensaries a permitted use in the M1 zone. Currently, it is not permitted use. That would be an area that would be more likely to house medicinal marijuana dispensary because of this location lends itself for that purpose. The second ordinance would prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana in any place in the township of Lacy. The only exception is the medicinal marijuana. But recreational marijuana would be prohibited. As you know, there is a question that will be on November ballot to authorize the implementation of recreational marijuana in New Jersey. This ordinance could be superseded in the event that that public question is passed, depending upon how the subsequent laws are written. Municipalities may be preempted. We don't know the answer to that question, but there's a provision in the ordinance that essentially addresses that issue in the event of a preemption. So it's a non-preemptive provision. So what it was intended to do is to, if the governing body was of the willingness to do it, is to allow medicinal marijuana, but make clear to everyone recreational marijuana would be prohibited.
So in the event that it passed, so recreation's on the ballot in November?
In November.
So if recreation passes in November, what, then our, then what?
It, it, I cannot say at this time as to whether our prohibition, our ordinance which would prohibit recreational marijuana, would be preempted. It's possible that it would be preempted.
So...
But you would have no choice in a matter of that point anyway.
Mr. Connors, what would happen if we had an application come before us for somebody to, let's say the building across the street, to want to be a dispensary for medical marijuana right now with our current code?
They would have to apply for a use variance.
Through the zoning board adjustment?
Correct.
And so even in addition, you know, to be clear, even if we zone it in the business park, they could still seek a variance or something across the street?
That's correct, I'm sure.
Is there any merit, is, can you outright ban marijuana?
I believe, in my opinion, you could now.
But if it passes?
But if it passes in November, it's quite possible that municipalities will be preempted from prohibiting the sale of recreational marijuana. And those that can obtain recreational marijuana may not need it for medicinal purposes if you didn't have a dispensary. So it's kind of a moot point at that juncture.
I have no problem prohibiting the recreational sale. I think that's a smart idea. We take our chances. I've always been for medicinal. And I think keeping it down in the business park makes a whole lot more sense than letting it out anywhere in Lacy Township. Yeah, you're right, Steve. They could come, well, I'm the mayor, they could come in and apply for a variance. But again, if we have a zoning where, that's where it's got to be, they've got to prove the hardship of not having, of that. So I think it would be the smart move, as far as I'm concerned, is put the medical down in the business park and prohibit the sale of recreational anywhere in Lacy Township. I have no problem with that.
Anybody else want to...
I have a question. This is for Mr. Connors. Can, can this medical recreational marijuana be regulated just like the ABC regulates the liquor industry?
It's quite possible.
Being by population? Am I right, Veronica? Is that how liquor licenses are also done?
Yes.
So if we started something to say that this is the population we have, we only allow this, and then we go on from there as population grows, same thing as that, then we can issue another. And make it a...
Well, again, we don't know. We don't know what the implementing laws are going to be if it's passed. As you know, there's a cannabis commission now that is the licensing arm of the state for medicinal marijuana. And in fact, in order to satisfy the requirements in order to obtain a license for medicinal marijuana, you have to demonstrate that the location is approved by the municipality on which it's going to be located. They don't want to issue licenses for licensees that are going to be located and the municipality doesn't support it. So that's one of the qualifying. What other regulations are promulgated after recreational marijuana or implementing statutes, I don't know.
I got something to say. Yeah, I, two years ago, I came to this committee. I was staunchly against medical marijuana. I brought, by way of our former prosecutor, Joe Coronado, a model ordinance that was at the time in use in Howell. My concerns are many. I've often asked people, what are the public health or public safety benefits of having a dispensary in your town? I just can't get a good answer. I would much rather, if somebody is in need of medical marijuana, it's prescribed, by all means. I work at a health department. I'm married to a nurse professional. If it's prescribed, by all means. I would just rather somebody bought it somewhere in some other town. There are police officers in our audience tonight, and I've had conversations with several of them. I'm sure they wouldn't want a dispensary in our town, be it medical or recreational. When you look at some of the studies that have been done, when you talk to some of the top levels of law enforcement in the county, I just don't know if it's something that you want. I don't want anybody to suffer. If they're prescribed it, I want them to be able to get it. That's where I come out in it. I think since other towns have ordnanced against it and early on, what I don't want is for Lacy to become a pot tourist destination. Because I have seen by different PowerPoints, different people, police officers flew out here from Denver, Colorado, opened it up by saying, you don't want to be us. Don't, New Jersey, don't be Colorado. So we have budgets that are under constraint. I don't want there to be added social issues. I think I've made a pretty good case. I may be outvoted. But the other concern for a medical dispensary is, what we've been told in the past, is you flip a switch and then they go recreational. And it's just too much to stop once we open that Pandora's box. Again, I ask, well-intentioned people, what is the public health or public safety benefit to that? Let people just buy it in a different town. We've worked so hard with the police, SROs, we've worked with our municipal alliance, we've worked with our superintendent of schools. I just think that it's, it's a road that we should not go down. And that's my opinion. Like I said, I may, I may be in the minority, but that's, that's where I come out in it. I'm for public health and public safety, and that's me. That's all, Mayor.
Um, you know, we discussed this before, and my, my opinion, first of all, on recreational marijuana was, we should wait until the state decides what they're going to do rather than doing something twice. When they first had decided or talked about making recreational marijuana legal, the original draft, and I could be wrong, and maybe our attorney can correct me, there was a time period that municipality had to pass an ordinance regulating it in their township. So, you know, I said, why rush through it in that case? And I still, I still agree with that. You know, we'd had some internal discussions, and we were trying to come up with a happy medium. And the happy medium was passing something like that and allowing medicinal marijuana in the township. I see no reason why not to have medicinal marijuana in the township and in that, in the business park. I think it's a benefit to the residents. Ideally, not all, but many of the, of the folks who require medicinal marijuana are very, very ill. And to make it as convenient as possible for them to have them in the township, I think would be a major benefit. I, you know, as long as they, they follow the proper safety procedures, security procedures, you know, I see no reason to deny them that convenience. I think Lacy Township has come, become a municipality of convenience. We're self-contained. We've got big box stores. We've got many, many fine restaurants that we hope will survive through this very, very trying time. I, you know, I love Lacy, and people tell me it's a great place to live for a lot of reasons. And one of the reasons is the convenience is. And I think this would be just one more convenience to the residents. So that's, I think, what I said.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm in...
It's a pleasure.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so I'll just weigh in. I'm completely conflicted on this issue. I agree with Mark. My instinct would be rather to wait to see what the state does. I'd be, I think that would be much better for us making the decision. However, sometimes our hands get forced in this. And I do understand where Pete's coming from.
Well, they expanded, Mayor, if I could, just one more time. You know, it used to just be for serious medical conditions such as cancer and Lou Gehrig's disease. Now I think there's twenty-five different maladies. So you, you have a lot more leeway now to be able to utilize this. And, you know, some of the questions, questions were asked us, well, I mean, why can't you just extract the Marinol out of it and then you don't have to get high? So I'm not a doctor. I don't pretend to be. But I have questions and I have reservations. But I, I'll, like I said, I may be outvoted on, on this issue, and that's, that's the way that'll be.
You know, I, I'd like to speak one thing. I thought in the beginning, I, the recreational, I'm totally against. But medical, I was on the borderline of it until I really had a personal, somebody in my family that has rheumatoid arthritis that is so bad that they can't even walk. Went to a doctor, got treatment with the medical marijuana with the, I'm not sure about these words, tea, and I don't know any of that, but got treated. And believe it or not, the pain has subsided. They can walk somewhat. So I, I don't know what marijuana has in it. The government must know something that it has for it to do something to help people. And that end of it, I agree with because I think it's helping some people. If I didn't have it happen, and I'm not afraid to say it, happen in my family, I would think all the ways around it. So I think it should be very well regulated. I think the state has to be involved in it. The recreational was never a secret among us or anything. You know, the recreational in the state of New Jersey, they thought, and I'm on the ABC board in, in New Jersey, and when it was brought up, it was brought up that they were going to go the liquor store way to regulate it through the ABC, to regulate the recreational marijuana, blah, blah, blah. In the last couple of meetings I went to, that has subsided. The only thing that worries me about the recreational marijuana is if the state of New Jersey decides on which direction they go, and if it gets legal, it can go in what they call the lottery. Wow. And I investigated, and I read a big article on it. That lottery way is a dangerous way to put recreational marijuana in the hands of anybody. Okay? And it's scary. When I really read it, and I sat there, and they asked my opinion when it was my turn to speak, and I said, I really can't speak right now because I need to read more about this because this lottery way scares me. And it's the same thing as we're doing with the medical. To have it regulated to a certain degree is a great thing. And, you know, somebody threw up at me at this meeting, and it really got me. They said, well, remember something, Mr. Juliana, the business you were working in, that was illegal at one time, prohibition. He says, what, do you have any comment about that or anything further? And I said, no. I said, yes, it was many years ago, and now it's legal. And they said, well, don't you think marijuana should have that chance? And I, and I couldn't answer that. I really couldn't because, like I said, I had to finish reading this. And the lottery way that they're talking about, I think is a very dangerous way for New Jersey to be involved in recreational marijuana.
I mean, does anybody, excuse me, does anybody know, I think, two years ago or three years ago, Freehold, was that, was that ever built? Did they ever build that one up in Freehold? Does anybody know?
No.
And it was all over the papers and so forth like that. You can go in that direction. You know, let me just say something. I'm old enough to remember when chiropractors were considered voodoo, you know? And now they're part of every health plan that you have now. And, you know, and my wife goes to one and so forth. So I just think it's, that the recreational, I'm against. This is not, the recreational is not the marijuana that was running around in the sixties and seventies. It's not. This stuff's a lot more potent. However, medical marijuana prescribed by a doctor, and yeah, are we going to have bad doctors in the system? You betcha. It's gonna happen, just like we have bad doctors who did OxyContin and all that other stuff.
And that's where I think I brought up, we should be regulated.
Right, I believe it should be regulated.
I think even the medical end of it should be so regulated and clamped down on so it doesn't allow. I mean, and I brought back a few different situations about how the ABC was, how we do it in this town. How does it work, Veronica? Population is...
Every ten, every ten years, obviously, you can either, you can get licenses. They don't take them away from you. It's seventy-five hundred for every distribution and thirty-five hundred, I think it's thirty-five, or three thousand for every consumption license. So again, we, yeah, so we wouldn't necessarily be able to see another license in town until at least 2021, when the results of the census come in.
And the other thing I think we have to think about is...
Excuse me one second.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We don't have to do it that way. The, the medical marijuana could be done in any way that we...
Right, because there's no legislation on it right now.
We can make the population fifteen thousand.
Right, there's no legislation on it right now. Whereas with the ABC laws, there's legislation that's in state law that that's what we have to follow.
It's a very, it's really...
Yeah, it was funny. The hypocrisy of government.
Yep.
By passing marijuana, I don't see, well, I don't, you know, gives out, it's natural, you know, and I don't see it much different than, as we legalize mushrooms and peyote at that point.
Well, here's, here's, here's the other thing, is that if we zone medical marijuana down into the business park, somebody comes in here, we stand a better chance of winning that fight because we have something on the books to put it down in the, in the business park than if we don't. So it just makes sense. It's just one more obstacle that they got because it is legal to have medical marijuana and set it up. So if we can, if we can control it as to where it goes, I think we're that much better off. And like you said, Nick, we don't know the reason why we can't say, okay, we're, population in this town is thirty thousand, right? So we'll issue one medical marijuana. We're not going to issue another one until we have another thirty thousand, which could be fifty years from now.
That's the point I think I'm trying to bring up. And that's how I think you can regulate and keep it small.
Right.
And...
You don't have any concerns about gang activity? Why would I want to buy marijuana from a dispensary and pay a Byzantine, a gross tax on it, when I can get some, some gangbanger or a gang member come in and say, you don't have to pay me any taxes? Gang, gang membership explodes when you have some of these things around town. Now, moreover, that's more recreational than medical. But when the product's out on the street, what are you going to do? You're going to buy a product that doesn't have the tax as opposed to it does. That's what happened in California. That's what happened in Colorado.
And that's on the recreational side. I'm dead set against the recreational side.
Once it's out of it.
So you're saying that happens with the medicinal? Do you have any, any, any figures to back that, or are you just speculating?
No, I'm not speculating. That was part of...
You're speculating, you have facts.
No, that was part of the presentation by Captain Joe Shellhammer of the Colorado State...
That medicinal marijuana expands gang activity.
Yes.
Hold on.
Because people want to buy it for a lower price and not get taxed out of the wazoo on it.
Hold on. I was at the same presentation. What it was, was the legislation started creeping legislation to expand it. So our due diligence is that we got to cull the legislations, legislators, to keeping this strictly medicinal, not expand the use of this. And eventually, that's what happened.
So once, once it passes in November, you don't have a choice.
That's the recreational side. You're right. It's not, you know, here's the thing. It's out of our hands at that point in time. So...
Yeah, but there we go back to the same old thing. Can we make our own thing and use the same thing as per population in Lacy Township?
I think on the medical side, we probably can because it's legal.
So can we put population limits in our ordinance, Mr. Connors?
I don't believe you can, no.
So until you, until it actually passes, or until you see the guidance from the state...
So the only thing right now we can do is zone it to a particular section of town.
So we can, so go with...
If you wanted to go with medical.
So we need a, a vote for a motion on both of these ordinances. Is that correct, Veronica?
Well, listen, we've had the ordinances for like quite a number of weeks. I do believe that each person, men, have had a chance to look them over. The one where it's zoning for recreational marijuana, if you choose to introduce it, it does then need to go to the planning board before second reading for them to...
But recreational or medicinal?
Uh, sorry, medicinal, I'm sorry. Medicinal marijuana, because it's a zoning change, so the planning board has to either approve it or make changes for it to come back for our review. So, you know, we would have to do that. The recreational one is a new chapter in the code book, so it doesn't have to go before the planning board. Listen, we can add them on and introduce the vote tonight if you want to.
I think my, my suggestion is we do add them on and at least take a vote on it.
Please get them on first reading. We can always make changes if you want to. And then depending on the substantiation of the changes, we might have to redo them at first reading.
Absolutely.
Let's get it out there.
Okay.
So we're going to do both, both of them. And obviously, just to clarify this again, amending chapter three thirty-five is for the medicinal, which is adding to establish medicinal dispensaries as permitted in the M1 Business Park Zone, which is the Lacy Business Park area. And then the other one would be creating a new chapter, chapter two thirty-six, and outlining the definitions for marijuana and what is prohibited and what will be, and the exemptions to the medicinal and the enforcement of such.
So I have another question about the ordinance against recreational. Let's say, for argument's sake, the state comes down and re-legalizes it, and whatever they come down with supersedes our ordinance, what do we have to do to change our ordinance?
Simply repeal it.
Just repeal it? Okay, go on.
I, I think, I think, I think we go forward with this, too. I'll make...
But do we, we don't repeal both. We only repeal the one, chapter two thirty-six. The zoning one still stays in place.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, correct. And I would just point out that the, the constitutional amendment that's on November's ballot provides that the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, the body which will be charged with creating regulations with regard to recreational marijuana, that the law of recreational marijuana will go into effect January first, notwithstanding any regulations adopted or not adopted by the Cannabis Regulatory. So they may take three or four months to come up with regulations. It's effective January first. So if November ballot recreational marijuana is passed, and there's nothing prohibiting municipalities from banning it for a period of time, given the fact that it's in November, you may not have an opportunity to pass an ordinance before January first. So it may be wise to...
So now with Reed, um, related to the recreational side of marijuana, and if it is something that becomes a use, are we able to introduce an ordinance zoning that, or is that just considered at that point retail sales? So that could be anywhere where you authorize retail sales?
I believe it would be authorized.
I thought so as well. All right. So I'll have them to add on to the township portion of the meeting tonight. You have a few guards to be...
You like this? You don't seem happy there. Okay. That's not what I got elected for. So...
So, um, in light of recent events in Asbury Park, um, the Asbury Park had voted to disregard the governor's executive orders. Um, it's a topic that we have brought up in the past, uh, a couple months here and we had our legal counsel's opinion. So in light of recent events, what do you think of Senator Connors?
Senator Attorney Connors.
Well, since you addressed me as Senator Connors, I could take, I could take the liberty of addressing it as a senator for a moment and say, "I think the executive orders are absolutely outrageous, inconsistent in regard to its applications and inequitable in many ways which we've all discussed in a number of different forums." As your township attorney, you're asking me if this governing body has a legal authorization to establish regulations pertaining to the opening of businesses in contrary to the executive orders, I would have to advise you that it does not. I would draw your attention to the statute that's been long in place, started in 1942, I think, and soon established, now say BC and that's before Connors, that A colon nine hyphen forty makes it unlawful for any municipality to adopt or enforce any regulations that are contrary to any rule or order put in place by the government. Sections forty-nine and fifty of that same statute prescribe penalties for the violation of that section. Now, I would also indicate to you that in the governor's executive order 107, which was one of the original executive orders instituting the social distancing and the stay-at-home order, it incorporated by reference the statute A colon nine hyphen forty. And then it goes on to say in paragraph twenty-four, "It shall be the duty of every person or entity in this state or doing business in this state and of the members of the governing body of every official, employee, or agent of every political subdivision in this state and of each member of all other governmental bodies, agencies, and authorities of this state of any nature whatsoever to cooperate fully in all matters concerning this executive order. Penalties for violations of this executive order may be imposed among other statutes," and again citing statute, section forty-nine and fifty of NJSA A colon nine. So it is clear that there are penalties. It is clear that it's a violation to authorize any regulation that's contrary to an executive order, notwithstanding how outrageous and equitable they may be, but until and unless a court adjudicates any of those executive orders as unenforceable, they are the law of the state of New Jersey. You're not permitted to tell police officers who to write summonses to or who not to write summonses to. The police do their job and they are under the guidance of the Osh County Prosecutor and the State Attorney General. They are the chief law enforcement agents of the state and of the county. So if the prosecutor's office tells the chief of police, who in turn tells his men, "You have to cite somebody," they're gonna have to cite somebody. You can't tell them not to and you can't tell them to cite somebody. But a prosecutor and attorney general may do so and in fact, as we know, in fact, that has been done, notwithstanding the fact that in other cases, the governor himself may have appeared to violate his executive order.
That's a good word, appeared.
I will also tell you that the penalty for violating the social distancing statutes is considered a disorderly persons offense, depending upon a statute upon which you're written, and that's dictated by the attorney general, the state attorney general, who has also issued directives to municipal prosecutors that they're not to pre-bargain those social distancing violations to local ordinance summonses. So they're playing very heavy-handed. I can't blame a business from wanting to violate these orders. I can't blame a police officer not wanting to enforce them. I can't blame this governing body if it were to say that the executive orders end to even pass a resolution denouncing the executive orders and finding that is egregious to the people that it's supposed to serve as a political statement. But I can't tell you, as a township attorney, that you're authorized to violate them. And so business owners are left to their own. They can collectively decide what they want to do on their own, but I'd hate to see anyone face a disorderly persons offense. That's different than a local ordinance complaint. And you'd have to determine what the likelihood would be of being cited. And I think that if I were a business owner and I cited, I would take it to court and I would raise a number of different arguments, including but not least of which is equal protection under the law and in some cases First Amendment violations. But there have been terrible, terrible inconsistencies. Bicycle shop owner couldn't sell bicycles but Walmart can. I have nothing against Walmart, but because Walmart sold tomatoes, if a bicycle shop had tomatoes, then they would be open. You could stand for hours in front of Home Depot to buy a bag of mulch, but you couldn't go in a retail store that's probably better equipped to control the number of people that are going in. You can dine outside and be six foot apart, but you can't dine inside and be six foot apart. You can take your dog to PetSmart and get it groomed, but you can't go and get groomed. There are, you can go to a protest, but you can't gather in a church. One is an expression of faith and prayer, the other's expression of political feelings and prayer. You couldn't go to a funeral home if there were more than ten people to grieve someone who was lost, but you can go to a protest to mourn someone who died at the hands of a tragic event. They don't make a lot of sense and this is what's bothering people and it's bothering this governing body. Please understand the distinction that a torture that I live with, as an attorney, I can't counsel somebody to break the law. But as a state senator, I can say that I think the law is ridiculous. Now here is the problem, because people have come to me as a state senator, say, "Well, why don't you fix it?" I'd love to.
Why don't you fix it?
I'd lift, I'd love to, but the governor doesn't listen to me because he's not even listening to people of his own party with regent's perspective. You could file a suit in Supreme Court, but the likelihood of the court even taking up the case before all of this is over is not likely, especially considering the persuasion of the court and the people that are appointed to it. It's the governor's appointment. So that's not like, I could put a bill in, but it'd have to pass both houses of the legislature and then even if it did, in the same party persuasion as the governor, the governor has to sign it into law and he's not gonna sign a law that takes away the powers that he's attempting and I believe usurping. So it's a very complicated, frustrating matter. I wish I could tell the governing body differently. I can't, but people are left to their own to do what they feel is best in their self-interest and hopefully somebody will successfully fight in court if that came sooner than the end of this pandemic.
So that was a mouthful. So that is pretty much sums up exactly how the five of us feel. For myself personally, I'm, I'm a small business owner. I deal with all small businesses, a lot, quite a few, they're all, the tenants that I have in my commercial properties are all small businesses. This is a very, you know, acute problem to me. It's something I'm extremely passionate about and I, I've been, it's all I've been talking about with Veronica for the past three months, basically, is the hypocrisy of the, of the executive orders and trying everything we can do to, to open things up as much as we can. Having said that, I do want to make, you know, what Chris had said, we're not the ones that are, we're not telling anybody what they can or can't do. It's really an individual, exactly how he said it, it's an individual business owner's choice.
Choice.
But it will not come from the governing body where we sit, where we tell, where we tell, "Go cite that business." That, we will not do that. But again, it is, it's, you know, people make choices, some choices have repercussions and that's the best of the, he said it well, that's the best advice I can give. So...
Is there any way that if somebody was to take it upon themselves to open their business, open it fully, the town wouldn't back them at all?
We can't. What, what, I've heard it, what would you, what would you, wait, first of all, wait, wait, wait.
If you guys don't lose the town, if the town doesn't open...
Stop a second. First of all, we're not a public comment.
You suffer your big boxes.
We're not, we're not open for public comment, but I have a question for you, real quick. What would you think that would look like, us supporting a business?
I think if every town that offered ass and did that, it would be a lot better.
I'm asking you what that support looks like, monetarily, monetary support? What kind of support are you looking for?
Back to the local businesses to open.
But we are.
We are, we are, we are.
Announce it, tell them open.
Open at your own discretion.
That's right.
Open at your own discretion.
We can't tell you to, said, you can, you know...
But we can't say that there wouldn't be summonses issued if there's complaints that are received.
You've already started losing a lot of businesses in Lacy.
We know, we know that, we know. And we're not gonna tell the police to drive around and see what businesses are open and cite them.
I understand that.
If the business owner wants to open up, under these circumstances, that's the risk of being a business owner. These guys understand that. You saw what Lakeside Diner did. "I'm gonna open up." And he's, he'd been opened up every day. I've driven by it and there's people standing outside, the township is, has, the township residents have supported it.
And we don't know if people are inside, you know, sometimes, you know?
Right, so, you know...
It, it's gonna be very little consolation to that gentleman who I don't know, but this governing body ought to draft a letter, send it to the governor and ask him why some executive orders are enforced and some aren't. Now, I'm pretty sure we won't get a response because someone already texted me one from a, an assemblyman in Parsippany and that went unanswered as well. I had sent that to certain members of the governing body, but we should, we, we can't advocate for breaking laws. I think it's pretty evident to see how hot everybody is and passionate up here and I'm gonna certainly have some comments when it's the appropriate time this evening, but that's at least we could do and post those questions to the governor, which are fair and respectful.
Well, can we just pass, you know, for that matter, again, it's, it's not really, doesn't hold any weight, but pass a resolution urging the governor to allow indoor dining or allow open, businesses to open, you know, so... I would, I would say urge the governor to stop this segmented of opening or the slow roll of opening businesses. Open the damn state of New Jersey up. Let the, let the business owners try to survive this. You know, I'm a commission salesman. I got my numbers today for the second quarter. They're ugly. They're absolutely ugly. And I'm telling you right now, the third quarter's not gonna, for me, it's not gonna be any better. It is what it is. I gotta survive it, but I, the small business people that have these stores, they got rents, lavender blue.
Oh, God.
Now, what a tragic tragedy that is. Absolute tragedy. And that's gonna be one of many. And I think when this thing is all over, the governor's gonna go, what, or somebody's gonna say to the governor, "What did you do to this state?" And he's not gonna have an answer.
Not gonna care.
Well, he's gonna care because he's gonna run for reelection, but he's not gonna have a satisfactory answer.
But I just, again, to make the point, we're not sending anybody out looking for anybody.
Right.
We are not.
We are not sending anybody. So...
This is a long workshop meeting.
I knew it was gonna be.
Does anybody have anything else to add on before we adjourn and go into township? I guess not. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we ready to go into township?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bolt board showing the time and place of the meeting. Everyone please rise to the plate. The pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Resolution 202152, appointing summer recreation staff.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the recreation department. Well, we're not, right now, we can have summer camp as of July 6th, so we're hiring our summer playground and camps positions. There's been a lot of changes, which I know some of you Scott have received, the regulations from Mr. Wilding. We're also hiring our beach patrol and, I think you're telling, you're making a lot of noise. And then our general office staff and our bus drivers. So I just need a motion to...
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution 202153, authorizing a leave of absence.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Carol Tamara for medical reasons. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution 202154, authorizing the filing of a grant application with NJDOT for Northwest Barnetget Pines Phase One.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the Northwest Barnetget Pines Street Road Improvement Project Phase One. This is for our 2021 application process. We are requesting a sum in a grant amount of $835,000. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor, I mean Mayor Kennes, wow.
Resolution 202156. You're gonna say Mayor Connor the next time.
I, I, I was here then.
202156, authorizing the cancellation of outstanding checks from the...
Um, can we turn to four first?
No, no. 155.
Four, it looks like number three.
Resolution 202155, authorizing the filing of a grant application with NJDOT for the Northwest Barnetget Pines Phase Two.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the Northwest Barnetget Pines Street Road Improvement Project known as Phase Two. This is a three-phase project, by the way. This is priority number two. We usually don't get awarded two projects and we're looking for a grant amount in the amount of $650,000 for the 2021 season. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution 202156, authorizing the cancellation of outstanding checks from the court regular account.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks from Lacy Township Municipal Court Account and the regular account number, and we are canceling three checks in the amount of nine dollars total.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution 202157, authorizing the cancellation of an outstanding check from the bail account.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks from Lacy Township Municipal Court Bail Account. We're canceling two checks, the total amount is $561. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.[1677.87]
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight, authorizing the release of a performance bond for Hanceys Pond dredging project.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of performance guarantee for the Hanceys Pond Maintenance Dredging Project. This has been reviewed and recommended by the engineer. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for Bayfront Park Project.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond posted for the Bayfront Park Improvement Project. This has met its two-year retention period for the maintenance bond. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes? Yes.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty, authorizing amendments to the temporary outdoor dining regulations.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending the guidelines to permit temporary outdoor dining. We adopted our initial one on May twenty-eighth, and based on the applications that have come in, and some of the questions that have come from the business owners that would like to participate in the outdoor dining, there was several suggested changes that were in line with. We've reviewed some of the other changes that some of the other towns have done, and we've, and I think you've got the marked-up copy of what was changed in there to accommodate some of those necessary changes. We've gotten, I think we're up to nine applications at this point.
Again, for this, we're trying to make it easier.
Yeah, and there is no fees or anything like that for those outdoor dining. The only fee that was established and has completely out of the township's hands is the ABC, because you're limited to the footprint where you can serve alcohol, so if you need to step outside that footprint, it's called an expansion of premises. So they are obligating those holders to a seventy-five-dollar fee and an application process through the state, which is dependent on myself and the chief signing off on them. So motion, and I have three of those pending right now. Motion on this one?
Senator Clark, good mayor. We passed a resolution at the last meeting.
May twenty-eighth.
So this, this would actually supersede that.
Yes.
I would suggest that we add a phrase in here that any previous resolutions or regulations adopted by the township committee pertaining to temporary outdoor dining inconsistent herewith or hereby repealed.
Okay.
Okay? I can write in the language for you.
Yeah, that'll be great. Good.
Just another, on, I just noticed on mine, on paragraph F, you were speaking about the, within the property lines. All such areas must be located, should be within the property lines.
There's been regulations that said that they could lease space from.
Yeah, I just, it was a typo.
Typo? Okay. If you mark that up, that would be great.
Yeah, you got it. So the, the resolution has amended.
I will tell you that Mr. Reed's office, between the construction code official, the zoning official, the code enforcement official and himself have, they've actually went out and hand-delivered the packets to all the businesses and have been constantly in contact and out on the sites with these businesses, trying to accommodate and do whatever we can to get this process ready for, for Monday, obviously. So they've put a lot of work in it. Mr. Reed has put a tremendous amount of work into reviewing and constantly reviewing this resolution to help make it easier for all the businesses. So we just need to do it as amended, as recommended by our attorney. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-one, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities. Obviously, the majority of these are being canceled due to the COVID, but I do have news that I am reopening the parks for rentals of parties, obviously up to a hundred people at this point, and we are reopening our community hall for those clubs and organizations that wish to gather. So they are starting as of Monday morning.
Nice.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes. Resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-two, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and three dollars and fifty-one cents. Motion?
Move it. Second. With noted abstention.
Okay. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes, with abstain on D zero four zero zero.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, with one noted abstention, H one five seven two.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Uh, yes, with abstention on M zero two, two-three-zero.
Mayor Kennes?
Yeah. Monthly reports.
All right. For the month of May, the municipal clerk's office took in receipts in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. For the month of April, road opening permits were taken in the amount of six thousand, seventy-five dollars, recycling commodity in the amount of twelve hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents, truck parking in the amount of seven thousand dollars. The month of April, the municipal docs took in receipts in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred. For the month of April, the zoning department or our community development department took in receipts of forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. For the month of May, the community development department took in receipts in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Motion to accept the reports as read?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a RAPA license amendment to the road repurpose Fort River?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve meeting minutes of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Add-ons?
Yes, I have the two ordinances that we spoke about this evening. First is going to be ordinance two thousand and twenty dash fourteen. It's an ordinance to the Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the Township Code of the Township of Lacy so as to establish a new chapter, two-three-six, entitled marijuana, to prohibit the sale, dispensation, and cultivation of marijuana in the Township of Lacy. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes?
Yes.
Second reading will be at our July meeting. Next ordinance is ordinance two thousand and twenty dash fifteen. It's an ordinance to the Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three-three-five of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled zoning, so as to establish medical cannabis dispensaries as permitted use in the M-one business park site. This will be also sent to the planning board and the adjoining municipalities and the Highlands Commission and the county planning board as well, as required by law. And it will be on second meeting after the planning board sends us their recommendation for their denial related to this. And if it's denied, we would have to go back and amend our ordinance, unfortunately. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
No.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
And Mayor Kennes?
Yes.
It does pass. All right, that's all I have to add on this evening.
Comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. I wrote a couple of comments down tonight. I just want to congratulate a couple of people, but first and foremost, to thank our police department. Best police department there is. Thanks for your good work the other day. And you, the men and women of the police department have been there for us. They're always there for us. I want to thank Superintendent Clark for inviting me to high school, Madison Dennehy, Jenna Strifler. Both young ladies said GPAs of four-point-six and four-point-seven. Both received multiple full scholarship offers. I wanted to thank James Wyland, direct director. We are not going to have a raise in price this year, and we will be able to have up to four-hundred-and-twenty kids in the summer camp. This was important to me. Some of the folks have touched on it already. I am going to read a couple of paragraphs. "It seems these days that the world is indeed upside down. In some cities, you can loot, but you can't shop. My mistake, though. We have curbside governor, curbside service. Governor Murphy, when was the last time you purchased a suit or other goods curbside? Jewelry, perhaps, maybe a shirt, but you still insist on these measures for our businesses with disclosure. This week, several, several of our residents said to me, Pete, our businesses are dying, to which I respectfully replied, no, many are already dead. To this date, I can't go to church or a place of worship without risking a fine, a fine like the Lakeside Diner received last week. But I can assemble to protest, and often as times as we've seen in other parts of the U.S., there's little by way of social distancing and mask-wearing. I'm not wearing my mask now because I'm reading. This week, we saw one of our businesses get a fine for being in violation of governor's executive orders. That's unfortunate, but it's the law. I ask you, Governor Murphy, if these are your executive orders, why do you require our local officials to deliver these penalties and not the state arm of the government in the state police? Your executive orders cover social distancing, masks, and the like, so why are these EOs not enforced at rallies or protests? But they are enforced in our businesses. Governor Murphy, New Jersey has twelve thousand, three hundred and three deaths, to Florida's two thousand, seven hundred and twelve. Yet Florida experienced no shutdown near the magnitude of your orders required. So what have these lockdown orders accomplished, and who is advising you? Today, this in a state, Florida, with nineteen million people, to our nine million people. Universal Studios, assorted restaurants, and even SeaWorld are open in Florida, yet I can't get a soup and a sandwich at the Lakeside Diner with my family. Here's what I said to Jersey Shore Online just a few minutes ago tonight. We put a man on the moon fifty-two years ago. So we should sure as hell be able to open up a diner in Lacey safely. I know we have the brain power to do that. And in closing, I say, Governor Murphy, this human and economic wreckage that we have experienced is on your watch. The division of children and families calls are up, addiction is up, domestic abuse is up, unemployment is up, and suicides are likely up, all under the initial stay-at-home order and your continued subsequent lockdown. Today, I'm through asking for crumbs from your table. I want you to advocate for our businesses as fervently as you did for recreational marijuana in our state. I want you to advocate for our businesses as fervently as you do for tax hikes in the form of increased tolls for working folks from Lacey Township and Ocean County as we commute up north. And finally, Governor Murphy, the time has come for one man to not be imbued with power enough to determine the closure of a state with nine million people. That must come from the assembly, the senate, and the people, not one person. To my clear-thinking friends, professional contacts, and neighbors, elections have consequences, and it's my sincere hope that our voices are heard in the next gubernatorial election. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well said, Pete. Thank you. Committeeman Giuliano?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the teachers and all the employees of the school and, and of the township. It's been a difficult time going through this COVID-nineteen. I know more for the teachers and everybody at the school end of it, and the children too. Speaking to a lot of them, it's been kind of tough on them. So Regina, please bring it back. They did a great job. You know, I've been monitoring it because my wife is being, working for the school. I watch everything that's going on, and they've done a great job for what they have to deal with. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yes. So it's great. I went to the protest yesterday. It went very well. First, I want to thank the Lacey Township Police Department. Excellent as always. Handled superbly. I, I seen it. I knew what was done behind the scenes. It was great. You guys did a great job. You really did. The fire departments, the EMSs, everybody that was involved there, Berkeley Township, the Sheriff's Department, everybody came together. It's a great thing to watch out. We help them, they help us. Isn't that some theory, huh? Goes a long way. So I want to thank you for the great job. I want to thank the Board of Education again and the middle school for having them as the command center and feeding them. I think that was a great, great thing, man. Really, it, it really touching. A job well done. You know, I, I speak to my son a little bit, and, you know, a lot of things go on in, in this world, and he said to me, he said, Dad, I want you to think about this saying. And I said, Go ahead, Nick, tell me. He said, "All lives matter when every life matters." Pretty wild, huh? Something to think about, and that's what we really got to think about. It's every life matters in this world. On the ending note, a lot of good things I like to speak about. I know everything in the town. I love to speak about it. People told me about things that happened in their own families. I'd bring it up. My own, I want to congratulate my son. He just bought last week his first home, and he bought a home in Lacey Township. So that made me even more proud. So I want to congratulate him and welcome him to the taxpaying world of Lacey Township. And that's what we said when we were sitting there, and we were sitting in the backyard and we were having a beer, and I, and I said, Nick, you know, things are, it's gonna be, you know, that homeowner is not coming in here and saying, hey, Mom, can you cook me something? You know, it doesn't happen, but I want to congratulate him. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. Committeeman, there you go. Dykoff?
His name is Tim. Timothy. Timber, the timber. Thank you very much. So, so I, one good thing about not going first, well, some good things going, some bad things. So when you, when you don't go first and there are, you know, things to be brought up, you know, the fellows committee normally will, will bring them up. But as I sit here, I, I don't ever have anything prepared when I, when I speak, and a couple of good things. Committeeman Curatolo, Deputy Mayor, nice job. That was, that was well said. I really appreciate that. And very important, you know, I, I follow social media quite a bit, and I, and I interact with a lot of people on social media. Try and, and stay middle of the road, and I don't get into too many arguments, and I try not to take sides, and I, you know, just try and be, to listen and be constructive. And I, I, you know, listen, we do what we can, and we, and we have limited control, and we can guide and we can help. But something Deputy Mayor Curatolo said that, that I really hope that everyone takes to heart is, this is being caused by, you can call them a demigod, you can call them whatever you want, but this governor has, has done things to this state, and, and the hypocrisy is just, it's mind-boggling. It's absolutely mind-boggling, the hypocrisy. And, and the rationale, this week it's not this, and next week. You know, recreation, summer camp. The, the other day, the, the regulations for summer camp came down, and they were absolutely ridiculous. Ten in the room, twenty-five outside, must-have masks, and then next day, it's a hundred outside, you know. So you're sitting there a, as a recreation director saying, okay, what do I do? You know, you've got parents who want to send their children to summer camp, and, you know, what are you gonna do to keep my children safe? These are the regulations, but then you get a different set of regulations. So it, it's just amazing. You know, is he gonna get re-elected? Unfortunately, he might. He might, and because people have short memories. It seems like, you, you know, and, and it seems, are, are we coming out of it? I understand the fear of people. I understand that ten short years ago, we were in an economic downturn where many people lost almost all they had, and they fought back to a point where they're starting to see, you know, daylight. And all of a sudden, something like this happens, and they're risking losing everything again, worse than ever. It, it's, it's just sad, but we've got a great town here. People are sticking together. You know, hopefully, those will survive. Hopefully, people will help each other, will, will take care of each other. You know, I pray. But since Mr. Giuliano took it upon himself to congratulate his child, I'm gonna do the same. My daughter graduated Temple University this year. Unfortunately, she didn't have a graduation ceremony except for the social distancing ceremony she had in my backyard with a few of her friends. And we'll have our party, and, but I want to congratulate her, and she got her first job.
Good for you.
That's, uh, that's, that's, that's real good. So with that, I'm gonna end on a good note. Thank you, Mayor.
Well said, Mark.
And it's him.
Committeeman McDonald?
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the march yesterday, peaceful march, with Mr. Giuliano. It was well-run. Our police officers did an outstanding job. We had, not, not only could you not see a lot of them, but they, their presence wasn't even felt, which is, which is a good thing. And I was trolling on Lacey chatter, and a lot of people were saying, why the protests? Where's the protest? Why are we protesting? This is a terrible thing. Let me remind everybody that this country was built, our founding fathers were protesters. Anybody remember the Boston Tea Party? How about the Stamp Act? The women's right to vote when they marched in the streets. Martin Luther King. And we could go on and on and on, but there is one difference, and that difference was, for the most part, they were peaceful demonstrations or peaceful protests. What we have seen over the last two weeks is unbelievable. It's a tragedy. And now we have this crazy idea of defunding the, the police departments. I mean, you, you, you can't make this stuff up. Hollywood's got nothing on these guys. They really, truly don't. And I follow this stuff, and I was watching on television, like most of us were, the pundits and the civil rights activists and politicians and everybody else. And they're all saying this is a very complicated issue. And I'm going, no, it's not a complicated issue. It's an issue of treating people the way you would want to be treated. And if we can all do that, regardless of their skin color, then guess what? This issue goes away. And I'm a big fan of a guy named Jason Riley, who writes for the Wall Street Journal. And he writes on politics and social issues, and he happens to be black. And he's got a book out, Stop Helping Us. And I read the, the footnotes on it, and here he is chronicling all the good doers, what they tried to do to help the black community and how it really backfired. And what bothers me the most about this is the politicians are gonna try to resolve this issue. They can't resolve this issue. This issue has to come from every one of us. That's the bottom line on that. Now, as far as Governor Wingnut, as my wife refers to him. Not knucklehead, that's how I call him, some other names, but, you know, I have talked to Committeeman Dykoff and everybody else. This is a tragedy that people aren't gonna realize how bad it is until it's over. And like I said earlier, then they're gonna want to know why he did it the way he did it. I'm in business, and I do a lot of business with business owners, small businessmen. business with business owners, small businessmen. I'm on the phone with them every day. Tim, we're not making it. What do we do? I'm in the financial service business. And I think what's going to happen here is, will he get reelected? I think there's a thirty percent chance he gets reelected. I think that people in this state are going to rise up and say, Enough is enough is enough of this. The fact that we are seven billion dollars, the budget's seven billion dollars in debt, just this budget, that doesn't include the other stuff. And he's going to increase your taxes on the sales tax, and if that doesn't happen, he's going to come on the real estate taxes. And then he has the audacity to increase the tolls on the Parkway and on the Turnpike and on the Atlantic City Expressway? This is where people go to work. It's, he needs a lobotomy. I really, truly believe that. And I can tell you this, every member of this township committee would love to send a, to pass a resolution telling these businesses to open up. But as you heard from our counselor today and the state senator, we can't do that. And like we said, we're not going to tell the police to go out and look for businesses that are open. So the business owners take the risk, but I can guarantee you that I will be out on Monday evenings to at least one or two restaurants outside. I will guarantee you will see me there. That I can promise you. And I'll probably be out Tuesday and Wednesday, too. So I would tell everybody that can get out there, support these businesses, because, you know, I guess about February, or maybe January, we had the cheerleaders who went down to Disney World, and they won first place, I think it was, right? And they read, they read a list of all the businesses that supported them and helped them with the money for the trip. And it was, they stood there for five minutes, and they reached in their own pockets to help these girls, either twelve or ten or whatever, go down to Walt Disney World or wherever it was, to win this cheerleading contest. That's the type of business that we have, and I would hope that everybody gets out and spends some money, and spends a lot of money, and take care of these waitresses and bartenders and everything else like that, that, because they've been starving. They've been starving. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I have a lot to say, too. To say I'm extremely disappointed, you guys said it well, but to say I'm extremely disappointed in the conduct of our governor would be a huge understatement. How can anyone possibly take him seriously when he violates his own executive orders? The arbitrariness of which businesses can open, under which rules, whether essential or non-essential, has any kind of logic or rational personal that could understand it. That was my Governor Murphy thing, but those guys said enough, so keep going about it. Township, just a bunch of stuff. We haven't been meeting in a while. Lacey Road in Manchester is finally getting reconstruction, reconstructed. I'm sure everybody saw the engineering stakes out there, so that's going to, I think, commence in a couple of weeks. We continue to monitor the demolition of the power plant. We're making decisions regarding the plant that are both in Lacey's long-term interest and protecting the safety of the residents in the short term. Nothing new to add exactly for the coronavirus. I'm appreciative that everyone came back to work here at Town Hall, and that everyone here seems to have adjusted well to the new protocols. We had a planning board meeting this week. I thank Tom for hosting them, but I cannot stand Zoom meetings anymore. Personally, I think communicating over a screen is an effective form of communication. And I will always offer public meetings, which we've always had here. We've never closed our public meetings. At the planning board, we're getting a Popeyes restaurant, where the former Burger King was. That was approved. In regards to the demonstrations, the entire township committee supports all peaceful demonstrations of any kind of persuasion. For the last three months, I've been on, the governor's office has been hosting mayors, calls with the mayors of all the municipality in New Jersey. I've participated in all of them, and I can assure our residents that, that both health concerns regarding COVID, as well as the economic concerns of small businesses are being advocated constantly on those calls, and they have been for three months. In addition, the White House has also been holding conference calls weekly, and I've participated in most of those as well. Yesterday, I was on a call with Vice President Pence, HUD Secretary Ben Carson, Education Secretary Betsy DeVos, Dr. Deborah Birx, the coronavirus response coordinator. And I can assure all our residents that they have an incredible amount of information, and they share the concerns of our residents as well. And since the lack of communication, I, you know, we're finally back to having a televised meeting. I did, three months ago, started Twitter account, which I try and put information out there daily, just because there was no tele, there was no video of anything anymore. So I'll still continue to probably post to Twitter. So those are all my comments, and I'll open it up to the public. Does the public have any comments? You had to come up, yeah.
You guys covered a lot of, I wanted to say, but I haven't heard.
You gotta, name an address.
Into the microphone.
Into the mic.
Don Zelman, eight thirty-five Winchester, if you can remember. You guys covered, you did a great job. Thank you for all you do. A lot of what I wanted to say about Governor Murphy, but my question is, who has oversight over Governor Murphy? We all know that if President Trump steps out of line this much, you have all of Congress all over him, but Murphy should not be a dictator and be able to do whatever he wants to do.
We'll have the senator answer that question.
Actually, called our office yesterday.
The courts.
Is anything being done about this?
The courts, the courts do, as you know, and I, it's not meant to give a civics lesson, but you have three branches of government. He controls one of them. The legislature controls the other, and the courts, or the third branch. And as I stated before, the governor's powers under the emergency powers, not only constitutional, but there were emergency powers that were conferred to him by previous legislature. So the legislature conferred him these powers. There's no question in my mind that he has those powers to do what he's doing. I think that he's usurped some of them and has applied it unconstitutionally. That would be subject to court challenge.
That was my second question about the Constitution. Like, how can he subvert the Constitution, especially if we're not under a state of emergency no longer? How can he then still take away rights from people?
Well, arguably, he can. And I would agree with that argument. But by the time the court agrees to hear the challenge, and it makes its way through the process, it'll be open, and then it'll be moved.
Yeah.
And the legislature, and I don't mean to make this partisan, but the fact of the matter is, is both houses of the legislature are controlled by his party. They determine what bills get posted. There is a bill that has been sponsored, and I've supported, that essentially would restrict his powers. That bill will never get heard. It'll never get posted, it'll never get heard. So the point is, effectively, he has become a dictator. And unfortunately, now we're all subject to, you know, to the rules that he's made. So it's terribly frustrating.
And the point I made when I called the township yesterday, saying, will there be a limit of a hundred people at this protest, is, how can you say there's no limit on a protest, but there's a limit if somebody wanted to have a wedding tomorrow, they couldn't have more than a hundred people there? I don't see how you can make that...
That's my, that's my argument about equal protection under law.
Yeah.
Not getting served equally.
And the last thing is something that's probably way higher than this room.
Or pay grade.
But Senator Congress might be able to speak about it. And I did some research the other day, because I was like, it's obvious that Governor Murphy doesn't care about South Jersey. Most of his voter base is North Jersey.
Correct.
Camden, and, you know, a couple of other areas. Would it be possible to look into seceding again, creating South Jersey as a separate state, which would give us more Republican votes for the presidential team? Because we are really separate, if you think about it. North of Monmouth is almost like being a different state. In South Jersey, we have Seaside Heights, we have Jenkinsins, we have Atlantic City. We have so many good things that would bring in enough taxes to support a South Jersey separate from North Jersey, because I feel like our voice means nothing to Governor Murphy. And he, he wants to cut funding to schools and then bring in illegal immigrants to take people's jobs. So it's obvious, I think he does not care about South Jersey, and if we were our own state, we could have our own governor.
We would all agree.
I, yeah, I agree with you.
I know they tried in nineteen eighty, it looks like.
And I would love to have further discussion with you on that particular matter. But I agree. If you look at sixty cents of every budget in dollars set north of the Raritan River, and again, as a very elementary civics lesson, I tried to tell you, if you want to understand why New Jersey is the way it is, and why things are done the way they're done, look at the composition of the state legislature. There are forty legislative districts, one senator, two assembly people for each of the forty districts. There used to be twenty-one senators for twenty-one counties and two assembly people, but they changed that with one man, one vote, under the Constitution. And they're configured by population. So every ten years, they count how many people in New Jersey, they divide it by forty, and that's how many people have to be in every legislative district. Your district, the ninth district, is the third largest geographically, because we have to cast our net wider in order to incorporate two hundred and thirty-seven thousand people. Whereas Newark and Essex County, because of the dense population, they may have as many as five or six senators representing interests of Essex County area, where you only have two or three, and if you go down to Cape May, only one. And so when it takes twenty-one votes in the Senate to pass a bill, and forty votes in the Assembly to pass a bill, if you look at where the numbers are, it's skewed in favor of the urban municipalities in the state. And so your argument rings even more true as to why we should be considering succession from North Jersey. Now, I fear, and I have completed the legal research on it, that it may take legislation to do that. So really, all you have to do is remember one formula, forty-one, twenty-one, and one. That's the magic number that it takes to have a bill passed, and that's what funds things, that's what puts, you know, gives the governor his power and so forth. And I always, just from a humor standpoint, every governor is the worst one until the next one.
We can't please anybody, that's for sure.
We're liable to get our own governor. South Jersey, we would be angry at. But we have a South Jersey voice in a Senate president, and I certainly hope that he takes that opportunity to, and certainly, as a person on the other side of the aisle, will do everything I can to help him, trying to get more for South Jersey. But so far, it really hasn't been working, as Regina will tell you about school aid funding.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Name an address.
Regina DeSanza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach, speaking as a private citizen. I have to do that. I'd like to thank Chief DeBella and the township committee for helping celebrate Mrs. Ditten's eighty-ninth birthday. It went very well. She was very surprised, and instead of just having a birthday, she had a birthday that lasted her several days, and she was very appreciative. The chief made it so special. It was wonderful.
Thank you for making us aware.
Remind you guys.
Yeah, reminding.
Yeah, it was just something that popped into my head, and I said, Let's do this. Let's try this. And it worked out great. On Tuesday night, June ninth, a YouTube video presentation premiere was aired to honor all the high school award and scholarship recipients. The public can view the video at any time. I believe it was called A Night of Pride, Mr. Lionel?
Yes, and it can be searched on Google. Just look up A Night of Pride, Lacey YouTube, and it should be dated Tuesday, June ninth. And congratulations to all the Lacey 2020 graduates, every grade, and the college kids also that missed out on their graduations. This pandemic caused a lot of problems for a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else from the public?
Seeing that motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Just let me catch up to you here. Residents of township Lacey County, County, all residents convening in executive session to discuss contractual matters, anticipated pending litigation, and matters of real estate.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
No further action?
That's correct.
Kill if he...